I don't think it works for six. I think all we're going to be continuing this one. I'm going to have plans for it in the following. About a bit of fantastic. What they call it is a decision. I don't want to. Do you like it like? And do you do you do you sharpen up? Minor design.
So this is the first one. This is my own. This is their first time. So. Neither of them practices.
I think you can sharpen, see if you can right. But there. That's our memo. So that's the problem. So also, I'm trying to figure out. I did the kitchen because it started checking off.
Yeah.
And then. That part of the life is for. Semi. It's not.
Yeah, yeah. Something that's definitely probably.
I was excited.
No, I could. Black and share. So I don't know. I didn't hear you. My dad.
Now it's time for the. The family. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. I'm scared. I'm talking. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm playing. You know, absolutely. Open package that. It's the red line. Red and white. There. There. And then. So. I'll be. That's a good question. There's something. The same as fine. For the questions, sometimes it's was that? Yeah. Anyway. So is Walt back home?
No, he's going to stay through the summer.
Oh, is he? Great.
He's working.
What's he doing?
He's working to get in state.
Oh, really?
So he had.
So who claimed that probably by the end of the summer?
So. I'll go from.
Right. Yeah. Almost. Scholarship. He's in. Where it is.
That's awesome.
He's got.
He's an operator.
Yeah, and he's got. Eighteen two hours on everything. Doing the. During college.
That's better.
That's. And you know. And I think. Goes down there someday.
What's he doing?
His grandmother.
That's.
Fourteen and a hundred.
That's. Who's had the life of him?
Hello, Erica.
Erica. You're on mute.
That's so unlike me to be quiet. Does anybody know off the top of their head what the next meeting date is? I don't have to dig into the website.
June thirteenth.
June thirteenth.
It's easier to be at home, isn't it? You can see. We can see you.
Yes.
Here we have these things.
So. I'm home because I'm going out of town on a car trip on Thursday and saving my gas.
The meeting is June eighth on my calendar, but do I have it wrong? June thirteen is a Sunday.
Well, we definitely don't meet on a Sunday.
Let me see what that is.
The second Tuesday in my calendar is the eighth.
Okay.
All right, I'm officially turning in my will not be present, but I'll send an email about that. I was hoping for the thirteenth, Richard, I like that day better. Can we post one by just one week for fun kicks and giggles?
The lives for thirteen, I think.
Oh, man. That's good. It's better than being on the. Let's back that up. What would that be? The the fifth? Thirteen.
Six.
Six. Because that's vacation week for a lot of folks maybe this year, although with the gas prices and lack of gas, maybe people won't be going anywhere.
I have to think that they'll get that. I mean, that's a. A logistics issue, not a supply issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
As I get the hardware fixed.
Yeah.
The hardware or the software, which one?
Well, the the hardware married to the software correctly, so that the hardware works. With the system.
Okey dokey. Is everybody ready at six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
All right. Welcome. We're hiding behind the masks and the screen here, so thank you all for being here tonight. And so, as usual, we begin by introducing ourselves. Mr. Abrams.
Jared Abrams. Kirk Andrews.
And I'm Bob Dallas.
I'm Thomas O'Brien. Rob Price.
Then we have from our staff.
Erica Harris.
I'm Richard McLeod, I'm the Director of Community Development.
And we have in in person, we have Paulion Hart, Planning and zoning manager, and Allegra de Nieuw York, planning tech.
Well, great. Well, thank you all for being here and presenting the revisions that we'll be looking at tonight. First action item for us is approval of the meeting minutes from April thirteen, twenty twenty one. So if there are any comments or a motion would be appropriate.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second? I'll second that. The motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hands. Opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstentions for folks. All right, well, thank you. Well, we have unfinished business, as we know. We have the review and consideration of the site ordinance to replace chapter twenty. And we had a rather lengthy meeting last time where we identified ideas and concepts, which the staff was so kind as to prepare the red line that was given to us and made available to the public. So the thought behind it is that staff make its presentation regarding the revisions. And then it would allow. Anybody to speak for or against the proposed changes. And then we would go through our usual process of picking out things that may come up. And and Paul, is it? Were you planning to go red line by red line? Or are we going to go in general? Or are you just going to focus on the? The amendments to the total sign area, the wall sign? You're just going to focus on the wall sign, right?
Yes, I'll focus on the amendments that we submitted. Okay. Staff amendments. I would suggest just for the for the review sort of of the.
Okay.
The change that led the point to go through, you know, as they come up.
All right, and then so that means that what we'll do is we'll go basically red line by red line and address any kind of comments or concerns. And try to develop a consensus for those. Staff were so kind to volunteer to keep up with what potential changes would be for each of the sections as we go through them. And then when we get to the end, it'll be time to address motions. And so we could, you know, specify it more then, but my thought would be that. For the things that we agree with without, you know. We would have a vote on on the package that way. If there are things that we don't agree with, then we'll probably set them aside if there's a number of them. So in other words, you would have a. You put something on a table. The things that we didn't agree with, we would have, you know, amendments to what's on the table. And then take a vote for that to go into the main motion. And then that main motion would be the package as revised by our comments, if if that works out. So we'll give it a shot and we're quick to revise if it doesn't. So with that, and by the way, since he's muffled, everybody, you know, I have to be reminded to speak directly into the speaker, especially you guys at the podium. So take it away.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start with the staff presentation. So let me share my screen. Okay, just a very brief recap of the last meeting. We had our sign consultant Sean Suda here and work work with you all the way through the ordinance. Answer any questions. Unfortunately, he's not here today, so we'll try to do that as best as as we can. We've submitted a clean and the red line version to you. That document is the version that you had seen before, then with any changes that we had heard from the commissioners at the last hearing. So this document does not include any additional changes that we had made or that we would like to make as as the staff. What we've done instead is we've. We've submitted an additional memo that has four proposed amendments, four proposed changes. That you're seeing here, and I want to go over those because you hadn't seen them before. I want to go over them and quickly explain those to you. And they're mostly to fix issues that are sort of so important that we need to take care of them now. And then sort of sort of oversights that we had previously that we want to slip into into the ordinance at this point. And we would need to consider them now to be for for us to be able to include them with with the city council package. So I would sort of ask for your patience with those. For items, I'll start with the biggest one, and I want to spend a little bit of time on this one because it's very important. First one is wall signs. And there is the current draft that you had seen last month, limited the width of wall signs to one hundred and twenty percent of the pedestrian door width. And we went out into into the city and tried to sort of apply it and and try it out. And we noticed that it's much too small. It is sort of disproportionately small on a lot of our sort of retail buildings, especially on the the buildings that are set back behind the parking lot. The proposing alternative regulations that allow for larger signs that are proportional to the facade. And that's a sign area of up to ten percent of the facade width. But then we have, of course, very large, very large kind of buildings also. So a second measurement there would be a cap of one hundred and twenty square feet, so that the wall sign could not exceed one hundred and twenty square feet, no matter the size of the facade. And then there's a second change associated with this. The previous language limited each building or each tenant sign to one wall sign only. And when you have buildings that are on street corners, they should frankly have additional signs. And I want to start. Yeah. The number of signs first, this is the proposed lazy dog restaurant building on Ashford Dunwoodie Road and perimeter center west, but they just put up the construction fencing down at perimeter perimeter mall. So it's on on a sort of a corner out parcel at the mall. So currently, they would only be allowed to have one wall sign. So they would have to make a decision whether it faces sort of towards either street or towards the parking lot where a lot of their customers will come from. So we propose language that instead would give them three signs by giving each building or each tenant suite. One wall sign for each street facing facade and then an additional wall sign to place predominantly that will be towards the parking lot. But to place on a different facade. And then we would still have a cap of one wall sign per facade. So you could not have two wall signs, street facing or two wall signs, parking lot facing. So there would be this additional cap of one sign. Per facade. Then for the signs, I have a few image for the sign size. This is what we have in some of our shopping centers at the moment. This is the plaza just on the road here. Where the the Wildwing Restaurant is is in there. This is two very small kind of retail suites with very large signage. And and part of the code really was to reduce sort of the 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 overall dimensions of these type of of building signs. But then what what the code would do by limiting it to one hundred and twenty percent of the door width would lead to signs that are truly kind of almost comically small. And that would sort of when a new tenant would move in and they would have to play signs that are of those dimensions. That's that, so we went a step too far, I would say. So our proposed regulations would be up to ten percent of of the overall facade area, and that would lead to signs approximately that would look like this. Which is sort of in in our mind, a more sort of proportional. Wall sign size. I have a second example here with larger retail suites. So you have the T-Mobile down there that would still is a relatively small seat, but then the mattress firm and the beauty mall kind of suites are, you know, relatively significant retail suites. And they have very large signage out there at the moment. And the proposed signage would be again, very, very, very small. So this is what's in the the draft that you had seen last month. And then the what we have proposed now would lead to signs that are approximately this size. The one on the bottom left would be the ten percent of the facade area. The other two would be kept by the one hundred and twenty square feet of sign size. And then I have one more kind of just hammering this home. This is the target at Ashford Lane, the current sign. What's in the current draft, like the the small sign that's tied to the door width. And then this would be the one hundred and twenty square feet approximately. Monument signs. And there it's not so much kind of that it leads to bad outcomes, but we we again went out to a bunch of different sites. And we sort of pondered if we really needed the different regulations between single panel and multiple panel monument signs. And if you remember, they would be two separate sign types. So if you would transition between a single panel and a multiple panel, let's say you have two panels right now, you would take have to take off. You would take off a panel. Let's say you were a religious institution where two sort of different congregations met, and then you took one off. Then it would shift into the single panel monument sign type that has sort of smaller overall that allows for smaller overall areas. So by. So I think that the easier way to do it is to have it all be just one sign type with one overall area, no matter the number of panels on there, to allow people to go back and forth. And quite frankly, like to have it easier for us on the administration side and for our code enforcement team also. By just reducing the number of sign types. The third point here is relatively limited, like we've you all mentioned, the those kind of neon window signs at your meeting last month also. The red line copy shows it of up to three square feet. But this goes back a while, kind of in discussions, especially in the Dunwoodie Village. And it was sort of a hard fought compromise on that that there would be one neon sign. So we would ask you to sort of may maintain that. And I think that's what the red lines. Were alluding to kind of that it would be up to three square feet. We would just sort of slip in that there is an additional limit of of one sign only. Again, that makes it much easier for especially the code enforcement team to go out and then count the number of signs as opposed to. Measure multiple signs and then then the square footage. And then the fourth one, and this was quite quite frankly, an oversight. This was an ordinance that had passed last year that hadn't made it into our Munich code, so kind of our. Digital set of ordinances yet. So when when the sign code was drafted, the consultant didn't have access to this yet. And then we overlooked it as the staff also. But it's an important piece. You can see it down at the construction site for the branch properties lot for the public that has this construction fence wrap out that has sort of prints advertising the development. The high street side has this construction fencing out at the moment, too. So what we're proposing here is to just add an additional section and slide this in. So if we wouldn't do it, then we would accidentally. But disallowed in in the city. With this, I went through these kind of poor suggested amendments. And if you have any questions about either one of those, please let me know and I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right, so does everybody have their packet in front of them? So as I suggested, and if you're all okay with it, we'll just go page by page. And, you know, the red line portion, I would assume, needs to be addressed. If you have something pressing that isn't red line, you know, feel free to say it, but my focus is going to be on the red line. So I'll just go over my page number and section and ask if there are any questions or comments amongst the commissioners that works for all of you.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to check if there's any public comments either in favor?
Do we have to say? Do we have to do this separately? I was going to do it together, but.
Yeah. We would do it.
Okay, that's right. That's right. The public comment portion forward against before we get into it. That's right. I forgot that last time as well. And I haven't one news. All right, we do have public comments, and I apologize for jumping into the program here. We would have gotten to them. So in regards to public comments, there's ten minutes for and ten minutes against. And if anybody wants to make a public comment now would be the time to indicate on your Zoom, I guess, by raising your hands, as I understand it. And then the administrator will let you in to be able to make comments. Again, it's ten minutes for, ten minutes against, and depending on how many people you have, adjust your timing accordingly. So do we have anybody for?
If you would like to speak, I have one hand raised at this. She put her hand down. If you would like to speak for, please raise your hand in the Zoom application.
Yeah. And.
I've seen no hands raised at this time.
Nobody, okay. Is there anybody speaking against?
If you would like to speak against, I see one Carrie Brown. I apologize if you said your name correctly, please unmute this week.
So if you state your name and.
Hi, can you hear me?
We do.
Great. Um, I actually had some visuals I submitted for the Ashford Lane property, and I'm speaking specifically of those in the public comment section. I believe it's the last four pages. Um. So I'll go ahead and start. Um, like I said, my name is Carrie Brown. I am the Design Director for JLL Atlanta's retail team. I have over twenty years of branding and design experience in the Atlanta market. And I'm here representing Consolidated Tamoka Land Company, who are the owners of Ashford Lane. Retailing in general and Ashford Lane in particular was having a tough time, and COVID certainly hurt that. It forced our team to rethink what the property could and should be and how we could turn it around. Despite all the negative news that exists today, we believe Ashford Lane has the potential to be perimeter center perimeter centers mainstream. To achieve this, we rolled up our sleeves and we created a new vision for the property, something that doesn't exist in the perimeter center. As shown in the conceptual renderings provided, they were the second through fourth pages of what we submitted. Our new design transfer transforms the property into a charming place with lush green landscape, outdoor dining, art installations, increased walkability, and individualized storefronts. We are one hundred percent aligned with the city of Dunwoodie's mission to maintain an aesthetically attractive city. Ashford Lane is on track to do just that. The owner is putting its money where its mouth is and is investing heavily in this property. One of the first priorities in the fifteen is the fifteen year old monument signs that exist on the property today. They're hard to miss, and they create the first impression of Ashford Lane along the three well traveled streets, creating the property borders. Currently, the monument signs include a mismatch of lighting styles, logo construction, and back panel materials. Age and tenant turnover have led to much needed upgrades, and the timing is right with sign code updates under construction or under consideration. On page forty of the May twenty twenty one draft sign code, it is specified that multi-panel monument signs within the perimeter center overlay are permitted to have any of three illumination types. Those include indirect, direct, and shadow and halo illumination. The Ashford Lane development team requests that the planning commission consider adding a fourth allowable illumination type, the internal box lighting defined on page twenty. The visual shown on page, the visual shown provided. In in the draft sign code shows the most legible logo results of the four and the most compatible application for monument signage construction. There is scarcity of retail tenants in the market today. For us to succeed in transforming the property, we need to attract top tier retailers. To them, monument signs are a must have. We are at a competitive disadvantage if we can't offer what other properties can. Brand recognition is an integral part of the tenant deal making and visible eye catching, well maintained monument signage is a must. The proposed solution that you see on page one of the submittal. Includes upgraded backlighting, energy efficient LED tenant panels with consistent application of logos. Size and infrastructure remain the same, and the panels do not include electronic messaging or any type of motion. The dimmable glow would not be excessive, distracting or dangerous to motorists or pedestrians. And the lighting, paint, and landscaping changes would not detract from the appearance of the property or the city of Dunwoodie rather enhance it. We want to showcase streamlined sophistication, and we feel the internally illuminated boxes would aid in achieving that. We understand the intent of the proposed regulations for the betterment of the city of Dunwoodie. We ask that the planning commission consider the scale of the perimeter center overlay as compared to signage in other smaller residential areas in the city. We must stay competitive to succeed in the market. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anybody else speaking in opposition?
Please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no other hands raised at this time.
All right, well, thank you. So this portion of the public comment is closed. Of course, at the end of the meeting, we have another public comment time if something should come up. But all right, so. Just to clarify, Ms. Brown was referring to the first version we had from last week in terms of page forty. So the. Current version that we're looking at today, which is the red line version. They start at page seven on the one I have, and hopefully you all have that in front of you. And like I say, just going section by section, what I would ask you, if the committee planning commissioners have any comments or questions of the staff or anybody who spoke, then now's the time to do it as we get to that part. So first in twenty dash three, A, you see the red line versions. And you see some clarification on some of the sign area measurements. All right, turning to page eight. We have the section C, which is a new part. Going further to section twenty dash four. We have subparagraph three. We had a lot of conversation about the vision triangle before. A lot of conversation about the vision triangle before. All right, moving on to page nine. Talks more about the landscaping at the top. Sign maintenance 20-7. I guess they added the right section of the code. 20-9 made a couple of changes to clarify who gets contacted. All right, moving on. 20-11 on page 10.
Let's start back real quick to 20-9.
Yes.
We had a note when we reviewed the draft about adding a reference to the code for a nuisance in the second sentence of 20-9, part one, where it reads, "In danger of falling earth determined by the city to be a nuisance." It's just, I wrote that in the draft, so it's not referenced there. So I don't know if we need to include that reference or if we're okay without it. It's just something I noted when we were.
As I recollect, and Director McCloy pointed out that when the fencing, the screening on the fence for the Ashford, I guess, when it was coming off, he immediately removed it. And that the process of a nuisance and abating a nuisance is more time-consuming. So I guess what this does is just if there is immediate danger, then this.
Yeah, I just, we had just put a note that we were going to reference the appropriate code in here. And I did not, that's something to be done. It's, it's just a comment that someone made during our last meeting.
Yeah, I recall that as well. I recall that it was, it was to allow people to, it was a connection between codes for definition of the purpose of nuisance.
We'll put that in there.
So what you're looking for is a reference here to the other part of the code?
Yeah, on 20-91. Right, Robert?
Yeah, that's what my note is from last time. Just, we're okay with the language, it's just we wanted to have a cross-reference.
We can put that in there.
Okay, so that I go, the reference ago in subparagraph one of 20-9? This.
Yeah, it would be something like a C-section, this and that of, of the zoning ordinance or the appropriate city code section.
All right. Do you all have general consensus on that? To include that?
My notes indicate that was a feature of the discussion as well, and I'm comfortable with adding a reference as well.
Okay, so moving forward. We're on page 10. We have changes in 20-11?
Yeah, I've got a note on this one too. We had a comment when we looked at this before that the that we needed to look at the limits for the $25,000 and $100,000 limits because they were old and may need to be increased. Did we double-check to make sure those numbers were right?
Yeah, we did. So we looked at, at other items that were charging and we decided to leave these numbers on there.
Yeah, it was just a note to check, so that's fine, thank you.
I had a question on 20-11.
Which, which part?
The first sentence there refers to occupational tax certificate. Is, is that a term replacing business license or?
Yeah, it's the official term kind of for the business license.
Right, is that universal now or?
So we use both kind of in similar ways, but in the code, it's typically referred to as occupational tax certificate.
But in this case, Paul, it could be a signed contractor from another part of town, right? So.
They just need a Georgia license of some form.
Yeah, so I didn't know if that term was appropriate or not. Some, some municipalities still use business license, correct?
That's correct, yeah, and we're not 100% consistent in the city too. Like, but the occupational tax certificate is the one we use for permitting and that's what we use when, when for the power construction permits too.
Okay, I think I'm understanding it better now. So if I'm going to install a sign in Dunwoody, I have to have a business license in Dunwoody, is that right?
So, so if you're the business owner and you install the sign, you can do it. If you're a contractor, you need to be a licensed contractor and you're subject to those insurance requirements. But, but if you're just, you just own a store down the road and you put your banner up, you don't need a contractor for that.
But this specifically says the contractor must have an occupational tax certificate. And my question is, if I'm a contractor from Marietta.
You can, you can do it, you would just need to show your Marietta.
Okay.
Business license or tax certificate, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Section 20-12 had a few changes. So you added unless expressly authorized by the community development director. Is that saying that the director could in the right-of-way allow non-commercial messages?
Yeah, correct, and, and, and that, that, that'll, that'll apply to like those existing signs. I think that's why we put it in for those existing signs that are in the right-of-way and yeah, I think that's, that's, that's what this applies to, like the, the landscape boulevard located in the right-of-way at the entrance to a common development. So those are your signs that are sort of typically the subdivision entrance signs or like those entrance signs to that are existing. So we wouldn't approve, we wouldn't approve any new ones, but we have a couple of those in the city of Dunwoody.
Okay. So the like, okay, I mean, so you basically are looking at the entrance signs, likelihood of a campaign sign being approved would be probably zero. Okay.
Non-traditional would be the graduation signs. So those are non-commercial.
Right. All right. Moving on, prohibited and exempt signs. A lot of conversation in this area last time. So going through each of them, we're on page 11. Moving on to page 12. All right, 20-15 for exempt signs.
Um, Bob, can I ask you a quick question? Can we go back to 2015? So we had a roof sign on a single-story building or any building under 35 feet in total height. For some reason, I had a different number down for the minimum height, but it is 35 feet. And only I went to look at the Shambly building just as a, just as a point of reference for me to try to understand what I was looking at. And I think that that, I'm happy to remember because it was about a month ago. I think that was a four or five-story building that that sign is on. And 35 feet puts us at basically a two-story house, if I'm correct, right?
It's about a three-story house. But it's, it's on the shorter side.
Hey, for some reason, I thought we were in the 40s. I had a note down that we were in the, in the 40s, so are we comfortable as a commissioner on the 35? I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant with the 35. I feel like that for me personally, that feels a little bit short based on what I've seen with the Shambly and then trying to visualize it maybe on some of our other buildings. But I'll defer to the rest of the commissioners on this one. If you guys are comfortable with 35 feet as a height.
The number that sticks in my head is the maximum height of a single-family residential building is 36 feet from the threshold. Is that, my memory served me correctly on that?
Trying to look it up here.
That's why I was thinking a two-story home, because I thought two-story homes are limited to 36 or 37 feet in height from the threshold.
Yeah, I mean, so you're, to visualize it, that's, you know, within a foot of that obviously, but.
Yeah, the roof signs would only apply in the districts where they're specifically allowed. So I think that's perimeter center only. And for commercial building, so if you have a first kind of floor commercial, that's about like 15 feet. And then each subsequent floor, maybe 11, 12 feet, it's about like a a three, three-floor kind of building for commercial. It could be a tall two-story building.
Okay. Um, if the rest of the commissioners are okay with 35 feet and, and if we feel like aesthetically based on commercial buildings, that 35 feet would not that it would be, I think what I'm wanting to make sure that we don't get caught in is a bunch of, you know, two-story, for example, two-story strip mall type of situation with a lot of signs on top, just kind of illuminating the different tenants places. So 30, that's, that was a little bit of my fear on the 35 feet, but as long as we're.
I've just, I just looked kind of on page 50 of the red line document. And that's actually where the roof sign regulations are. There's the building height mentioned again, and there it really is mentioned at three stories of 40 feet. So Commissioner Harris is probably right that we should make at least those numbers the same. I would say that it was probably an error kind of in one of those numbers.
So what you're suggesting is we just said three stories.
Or 40 feet minimum. Yeah, and we discussed the reason we did 40 feet, three stories or 40 feet is to, because I think there were some larger, we didn't want to say two stories because of a shorter two-story, but there are some larger two-story, for example, like a two-floor Crate and Barrel as an example type of store. Those tend to have very tall floor-to-ceiling, single stories on top of each other. So the, the three stories or 40 feet minimum height, that was, that just stuck out with me. I'd like to clean that up at least, and I would, I would suggest sticking with the 40 feet over 35.
Yeah, I mean, to put it in context, this strip mall that's on Hammond, they, Paul, you actually had a picture of one of the different signs on there. We had the T-Mobile, that building, how tall is that building? That's because that's two stories.
That, that could credibly be 40, 40 feet. I think that's about each, each floor there is about 20 feet tall. So that could be, it's only two floors, but it's probably 40 feet tall.
Yeah, so that's a good example, I think, for visually, you know, what, what you're trying to suggest, commissioners.
Yeah, yeah, so 40 feet would be my preference, 40 feet or the three stories or 40 feet.
So commissioners, what's your consensus on that?
Speaking for myself, I could endorse that, but I think we need to pick a metric or say that the greater of or the lesser of, we need to, we need to figure out a reconciliation between the three stories of 40 feet. For example, if a three-story building is lower than 40 feet, what do we want to hold them to?
That's a good point. So in that situation, I would recommend 40 feet because I think there are stores that are large two-story stores with the great, you know, floor-to-ceiling height where you wouldn't want to necessarily step on their toes because it could be aesthetically pleasing. If we were picking one or the other, my recommendation would be to stick with the 40.
You're suggesting a straight 40 feet?
Yeah, I like that. And if somebody wants to have a big vaulted ceiling, yeah, open room.
Okay, I think there's a consensus amount, 40 feet, if you want to note that one. Okay, thank you. All right. Moving for exempt signs. Page 12, section 20-15. 13. Okay, moving to page 14. We have a few changes on 20-16, define sign terms. Moving on to page 15. Temporary signs affected. All right, 16, 17, page 17. Multi-story building has been added. Page 19. On the window and door sign. All right, moving on, page 21. EV charging stations. Gasoline islands. Of course, we talked about the advertisements where the gasoline pump speaks to you visually and orally. Address placards on 2019. We allow more than flight poles on quasi-public institutional. It's a St. Luke's exception. All right, moving forward on we have changes. Flipping through them on page 27 now.
Well, I want to pull up, point, just one, one note on page 22. The text is correct, it just should have been redlined in 20-21C. We add flashing, that's new from the previous time. So the, the text has been changed, it's just not redlined to reflect that change.
Which, which paragraph is that, I'm sorry?
It's a C, electronic message sequence must be accompanied by a means of fading or dissolving but shall not scroll, travel, or flash. We added or flash in our comments last time, so it just, it's not indicated as a red line. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that though.
Do you all catch that? Good catch, Robert. Okay. All right, moving along, page 23. 24. 25 has changes in one of the boxes. Moving along to page 26, yard signs. Additions to make it correspond to the other sections. 27, the sign area in the standards portion of 20-23. 28. We've taken out a significant portion and just had a set number of square feet for the total sign area. Since we don't have major or minor. 29, nothing's changed. 30. Cleaned it up some.
Bob, hold on one second, I just, I do want to check something.
Which one?
Just on, yeah, there's page 30, I'm just, I'm trying, I was cross-referencing. Four feet extension from the building. Thought it was, um, I just want to make sure as we're going through, there was a section. Oh, and I did not take the most efficient notes on this part. But there were, there was a section where the projecting signs. There was one area where it could project four feet and hang down um, a certain amount and then another where it projected and it hung down a certain amount. I think it was a perimeter versus village. Does anyone remember that?
Where in the document would you refer to?
I'm sorry, um, I am looking on page 30.
30, okay.
And um, and so just, I'm trying to, I was looking, I was trying to find. I'll hold my comment there, but I'm, I'm, as I keep through, I may refer back to page 30. So I'll make a note of that. So I'm, I'm gonna be quiet now and keep my eyes up.
I I didn't, I I didn't take any notes on that one from our last meeting. So if you, if you want to come back, of course, by all means. Okay, um, we are moving onward to 31.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think I do know where she was talking about. Erica can, uh, it looks to me like we're talking about on the old document, page 43. That's perimeter center 20 dash 25D projecting blade signs. It originally was three feet max, which we uh, redlined to increase to four. Now, we're not there in that document, but I suspect that's the discrepancy you're describing.
Right, that's what I was trying to look for and just make sure that we addressed that.
Okay, yeah, and I haven't checked that in the new document, but I wanted to find it in the old document because I remembered what you were talking about and wanted to make sure we squared that. So.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
20 dash 25 subsection D. So when we get there, that'll be, that'll be what we want to take a look at.
Cool. All right, moving onward, 32. Doesn't have any changes. 33 illumination type was added, the indirect. 34. Says limited temporary banner signs. You can't light them up. All right, 35, had the major minor correction. We've added authorized agents. This is section 20 dash 24. All right, moving to 36, the major minor correction. 37. He was properly placing the A. All right, 38, nothing major. 39. Move right on, 41, um, sign total height, three feet max for the uh, wayfaring sign in a commercial district. And uh, no more painted mural sign.
Um, can I ask, did we, did we agree to strike that? I did not see that.
Yeah, let me give it to my notes. That's a good question. Hold on. I don't have any notes of that um, going away. So the staff wants to talk about that.
Yeah, I'm surprised about it too. Uh, I would say that that's not. So I think if you go two pages further, it was not our intent to strike it out. I think if you go two pages further, it's moved behind the freestanding hanging sign. So I think it was just like to move that location.
Okay, so.
Okay.
It we, it move it, it got, it fell back in the line by one slot. Okay, there it is.
Yep, yep.
Okay, great. It's basically the same thing. Okay. All right. So we allow indirect lighting for the uh, freestanding hanging sign. Same with the painted mural sign. Which is on page 43. Okay, so we're now on page uh, 44. Got rid of the plastic sandwich lines. Nobody wants a plastic sandwich. You want them wood, like the ones I make at home. All right, moving on to page 45.
All right, this is.
Go back.
This is the section that we had our public comment on.
It's uh, uh, here.
The, the, the Ms. Ms. Brown who commented earlier. Her comment was related to this 20 dash 25 part. So and she referenced some um, comments that I don't think I got. Yeah, she referenced a four-page document, some elevations that I don't know that I've seen. But to my recollection, and you correct me, I believe she wanted to add to illumination types, the internal box lighting.
Yeah, so that, I mean, this is, if we want to talk about that comment, this is the, what I'm just pointing out is this is the time to talk about that comment. This is the section applied to.
Yeah, I will point out, though, that those signs were built, if they were built 15 years ago, they were built in DeKalb County. Um, all those major signs that were constructed with that lighting type were built in DeKalb County. And we have not allowed them here at all.
Right, specifically which section are you talking about?
It's 20 dash 25 perimeter center monument signs.
Right. Yeah, so.
And her comment was to request lighting and Richard is saying that this was providing some um, some history and context. Um, so for that addition, I just wanted to raise the issue that we had a public comment on this. We ought to.
So regarding Ms. Brown's comments, what are yours? Thoughts on what she said?
Well, I would like to hear more Richard's thoughts, but I I believe the notes that I took from her public comment, and I did not see that public comment document either with the um, attached images. But um, she was asking for LED lighting for letter lighting. It was one of the notes that I took from her public comment. And so I'm assuming allowing the sign to be lit from within rather than um, rather than a shadow halo behind or um, you know, hanging from above or shining up on it. Um, Richard.
Yeah.
I would love your thoughts. Um, on.
We, so we held steady in this version compared to the last version. Um, it was brought up by the sign committee um, that those were specifically targeted in our code and per outlawed. Um, so we just continued that because the the committee suggested that.
Comparative to other um, urban suburban areas, you know, commercial districts similar to perimeter, though, what would you say?
So um, in the cities that I've been with in Woodstock and Alpharetta, we banned them both in those cities.
Was it at the last meeting that we had examples of the different kinds of them shown to us? Either photographs or something like that?
Yes. Paul, I think presented.
I don't know if one's readily available or not, if you want to put it in your mind's eye.
So we, we have them in in the code. I think there are some sample images on page. Let me see, it's in the beginning with the elimination types. It has uh, images in there. 23.
Page 23 of the uh, the red line version.
Way to.
Yeah, so you have these.
Yeah, there they are.
It's internal box lighting that she's referencing. So it's it, it is often, I mean, it it exists like in very nice versions and in not nice versions. Like the traditional version is like where you have these long fluorescent kind of bulbs in there. And then they they flicker at times and and they go off and then, so it's, it's generally considered sort of a, you know, less upscale version of uh, of lighting. Um, the images that uh, the, the person who responded uh, who spoke during public comment, they're part of the package kind of towards the very end. I put the parent, the package on your screen um, on, on the computer as a PDF. And I, I think I've opened it on.
Can you share yours? Because I don't see it right now.
So let me see, I have it on here too.
Obviously, on page 23, 20 dash 21 identifies the complete set of allowed signs. I believe this.
Yeah, and it's like, it it have also has the internal box lighting, but it's not allowed in any of the districts.
Right.
But it shows it for comparison. So I can share my screen for just a second, if you'll allow me. So let me go up. So these are the images that she submitted on the, the left-hand side, sort of the, the current sign that's out on the location. And then uh, the sign type, I think on the right-hand side, you can see the glow that comes from the sign because it's uh, internally lit. What we would require with our current language is either to have those um, the letters be either individually lit or the letters to be sort of backlit to create this halo effect. Or indirect lighting through uh, either sort of coosneck lights or or uplights while what she's proposing is to have the entirety of the sign to be internally lit. So this is one image. And I think this is sort of a second image that she wanted to show that shows the, what, what they're going to do with the, the property. Let me see if there was an additional about the signage. No, so, but, but this image here displays kind of what, what they're proposing and the, the steering committee had considered it at the time, but decided not to, not to move forward with it.
Um, Paul, a couple of um, comments on this now that we're seeing this. I mean, just off, off the cuff, I, I agree with, for me personally speaking, I agree with sticking with what we have. Um, I've seen the, for example, on the far right one, I, I do not find it as attractive as more of the 3D look that is seen in the um, first one. Um, but if you could scroll down, because I do recall her at some point um, during public comment, I took a note also about um, about the size. Um, so if you could scroll down to, I think might be two, one, so one more, go down one more. Here, and then the next one. So I thought in public comments, she might have also been referencing perhaps the size of the signs. For example, if you're looking at Ceriseau, Paul's, if we look at these pictures here, given our current um, the current code recommendations would just quick look, does it look like these would not be okay? In particular, I'm looking at Ceriseau.
Yeah, so we saw, I would say it looks a tad big. It's, it's a bit tough to say because of the angle. Ceriseau would say it looks a tad big. The other ones are probably fine.
Yeah, because my, when we go back, so we've got 100 twers, 120 square feet, which is essentially a, a 10 by 12 um, sign. And so Ceriseau looks like it would probably not make the mark.
And, and these streets would probably like for these, because they're not quite as large. These would probably be capped at um, at 10% of the total facade area. So it depends how sort of good your um, sort of um, spatial vision is, if you can picture what 10% roughly of the facade would be. And so I'd say Paul's probably looks like it could be about 10%. Uh, so he says it looks like it could be a bit more than 10%.
Yeah, that looks more like, for me, 25 to 30. Um, and even the next sign, I can't read it behind. That looks like that might even be slightly large. So to her point, and this is something I will say, and I know we haven't gotten there, but as we're looking at this and we, and I was thinking with the 120 square foot cap. With the wall signs, um, I was, in particular, you showed the Target building sign. And I was thinking of other stores such as Crate and Barrel or maybe the Container Store. Some of these larger box stores, I feel like the 120 square foot cap actually might be too small. Um, I completely agree that the um, you know, that it is an improvement over the previous limitations, especially when you showed those visuals. I'm still concerned that the 120 um, square foot cap might also be too small, given some of the um, store types that we have. And I don't know if there's a way to um, provide more flexibility for those stores, but the target rendition really popped out at me. And I think we might even be going beyond, um, I mean, you look at Target, I think it's some of the Publix wall signs. I think even some of our grocery stores might be otherwise impacted by this. And that's something to think about as we have the Publix coming in. They tend to have larger um, lettered wall signs for stores like that. So I would be curious, considering it hasn't been, I don't know if it would, if this gets passed before it's built, if that would impact the type of signing that signage that they're putting up.
They, they have specific signage that was referenced in their zoning conditions. So it doesn't really matter what we pass.
For this one, okay. Yeah, I, um, so I am, while I'm not, I don't want to get into the internal box lighting that, that um, Ms. Brown was referencing. I do recall part of her commentary being about the sign size that's allowed. And I know this is a careful dance. I, I recognize that. But I do think that that 120 square foot cap might be too small, considering some of the buildings that we are working with. And I don't know what I would recommend there, but I would like to have planning commissioners pitch in some conversation and then maybe Paul and Richard hear from you some more on that 120 square foot cap.
To clarify what we're talking about on page 46, the wall sign. What you're saying is 120% of total pedestrian door is too small.
Um, I'm sorry.
Is that what you were talking about? I just went with 120.
Now, the 120 that of the door width was the old language and we're suggesting it'd be 10% of the facade or up to 120 square feet.
Right. So it's not redlined in this right now.
Turn my attention to what page of the document?
It's the, the supplemental materials.
At 46.
You jumped to that.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, that's right.
So it, it's referencing page 46, but it's not redlined in our version because this is the new staff um, recommendations.
Right.
Which again, far improvement, um, but I do wonder if the limitations might be too stringent to allow for um, what would be a combination of artistic creativity and then also what I think would be um, some uh, some sign size diversity given larger box stores.
Well, Erica, right now we have lesser of language. What would you think about greater of language? So we've got the lesser of 10% or 120 square feet. Okay.
Well, you can, if, if you go greater, then you can have a little bitty building with a gigantic sign.
10%. That could be exciting.
Well, if you change it to greater to whichever is greater, then you totally flipped it. I mean, could you just say 10% of the facade area? How, I mean, how many cases do we have where it's going to be? That much bigger. I mean, it might be for the big box realtors, right? Where you would have massive facades. That might, that might be under zoning, you know, separate.
For very long facades.
No, that's true.
Or like, for example, the one on Ashford, um, excuse me, on the retail store on the second floor that took up three storefronts. So that would be, we did 10%, it would be even larger than their existing one.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, I think you need to have both there, but the question is what what do those numbers need to be?
If I can help you visualize it. If I can, if I can help you visualize it. Um, because we measured it out for those, um, for those images that we created. Let me quickly pull up the document again. And because it's, I think that might be helpful. If you look at this one here, the one on the, uh, bottom right is approximately a twelve hundred square feet. So this would be more or less the maximum. And this is where it caps out. This is where it changes to be governed by the overall hundred and twenty square foot cap. So it's like a, an overlarge two-story, uh, two, two storefront kind of a, that would be capped by the hundred and twenty square feet. The one on top is, is much larger, it's probably two thousand square feet or over two thousand square feet in facade area. So that would be, uh, allowing for size. Let me show this one real quick. So this one, the one on the top and the bottom are approximately a hundred and twenty square feet. Um, so if we have the top one to be a ten percent, that would go to approximately twice the size. If, if that helps visualize it.
So Erica, you, 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 you just saying that you want the size bigger, the question becomes how much bigger?
Yeah.
And so up to a hundred and twenty square feet is going to always be the limiting, the way it's written here, a hundred and fifty square feet. Two hundred square feet. I mean, what would be the cap?
Can we see the Target building once, Paul? So that's existing and then the, with the, um, ten percent or a hundred twenty?
How big is the existing, Paul, if you know?
So I would say it's probably two hundred and fifty.
So.
So the other one was a hundred and twenty square feet. You think this one's two hundred and fifty? So. Is there something in the middle that you think is more appropriate that would fit the needs without?
We had looked at a couple of the municipalities and, and I think Woodstock has relatively appropriate signage and I think they're capping out at a hundred and sixty square feet.
And Erica, remember that, um, this is all in the perimeter center and all those buildings are meant to be moved forward when they get rebuilt. So the smaller sign is more appropriate when those buildings get rebuilt.
Well, you don't get the smaller sign by having it at ten percent, but not exceed a hundred and, let's say fifty square feet. For the smaller facade buildings.
Talking about geographic location, like you could have a large building if you redeveloped right on the street. And so in that case, is a hundred and twenty square feet a more appropriate size for a building right on the street?
I think that we need to think about it even with some more depth though, because it's not just about a low line sign. This also could be something that's dealing with building height. As an example, when we're dealing with, for instance, the super target even brought close up to the street. The height of this building and the sign for me, we're talking balance. That sign is in balance. For me per, personally aesthetically with that building size. There are other signs that don't look in balance with the building size. This looks in balance to me, even if it were close up to the street. Um, because it serves a dual purpose of A, identifying where it is. But again, there's an aesthetic purpose to it as well. Uh, and I go back to some other buildings, um, that are even one-story buildings that are, are gargantuan. They're huge. Let's take the Container Store. The Container Store sign is, is quite large. Even if we were to bring it up to the street and, and I've spent plenty of time walking in cities like Walnut Creek and, um, Lafayette and some other major areas in California, Southern California, um, where uh, you know, we do have more street front buildings and some of these larger box stores do have larger signage. But again, the sign is meant to be, um, aesthetically pleasing and then also in balance with the building itself. So part of my concern with the hundred twenty square foot, um, cap is that it's not necessarily allowing what would be a, a a conversation about a sign that would be aesthetically in balance with the building. That's my personal concern about this limitation being applied broadly from maybe a, you know, uh, what would be more of a multiple tenants in, you know, a building situation versus a single tenant in a, um, that's taking it the same square footage, the same, um, facade square footage. It just, I don't know, there's something about it to me that makes me concerned that we could end up with signage that is not as aesthetically pleasing with the hundred twenty square foot cap.
So suppose we just said for buildings over fifty or thirty thousand square feet, you could go to, to ten percent or a hundred and fifty or a hundred and eighty, uh, square feet.
And that would be, so I think if I'm, um, remembering correctly, when we talk about us, buildings as size, that would basically be your grocery store, super target, container store type of, yeah, that would make me more comfortable, Richard. I think that would provide a little more balance for me. And I would, I would err on the hundred eighty square foot. I would increase it a little bit more.
Let me ask, where the Publix is going in? How many square feet is that building?
Uh, I'd have to check. It's probably twenty.
I thought it was twenty-five. It was a slightly smaller grocery store. Grocery stores, I think, are more like in the forty thousand, but this is a smaller, uh, it's a smaller market style grocery store.
Remember, they also have street frontage out, uh, by their signs, um, besides the upfront as well, being on the building.
So if I understand you right, for a building of a certain size, twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty thousand square feet, then the ten percent, uh, up to a larger number is what you're looking for. So we have to define those numbers. I mean, what, what numbers were you having in mind in terms of that?
I would say larger than thirty thousand square feet and up to a hundred and eighty square feet.
I, I would find that, um, I'm comfortable with that suggestion.
The, the standard would be ten percent for buildings less than thirty thousand square feet, ten percent or a hundred and twenty.
Yes.
Greater than thirty thousand, ten percent or a hundred and eighty? Or whichever is less.
Now, do we want to be careful? Are we talking, because some of these buildings might be thirty thousand square feet, but occupied by multiple tenants. So we're talking about a single tenant.
Yeah.
You can use the language that's in the staff memo. Um, that, that's what I would have asked too, like, give it spelled out for single tenant buildings. And then you would add it there and then maybe it's spelled out for multi-tenant buildings. And then you could follow that language. So it applies kind of to, if there's a large single tenant, let's say like a big store at the mall, it applies to them as well. But if it's a large single tenant building, you know, uh, it applies to them also.
So Paul, you're proposing having it appear under both, both slices there?
Yeah, that, that's what I would suggest to make sure kind of that, that it applies to both kind of the tenant suite and the building.
Good.
Thank you for dealing with me on this, you guys.
So, so single tenant, thirty thousand square feet, a larger, up to a hundred and eighty square feet.
And with, uh, an individual tenant in the multi-tenant, but it would be an individual tenant. So like somebody at the mall that has a huge footprint. That tenant would have the opportunity to, uh, uh, if they were greater than thirty thousand square feet, would have the opportunity to go to a hundred and eighty.
So what, so you, so you don't, you don't need single tenant or not, if it's thirty tiles, square feet or more.
Right, but we want to, we want to make sure that where there are multiple tenants in a single structure, we don't want to add the square footage together if there are ten tenants in a three.
I think you're saying the same thing. So we need to say thirty thousand per tenant.
There you go.
Yep.
Is that right?
Yeah, so it really is. If the tenant is, or the building is thirty thousand square feet or more.
The tenant, no, I like the tenant.
It, it has to stay tenant, um, Bob, because there are buildings out there that are thirty thousand square feet, but they have six tenants in it. And so we're talking about a single building for, as, you know, super target as an example, Publix as an example, uh, Container Store. I mean, there's the Best Buy. Um, uh, actually, I don't know how big Best Buy is, but some of these larger big box stores, uh, giving them more flexibility in their sign size and their single tenant stores.
Yeah, no, and, and that makes perfect sense. So just to get any language correct. What we want, so we've.
Bob will have it ready by the time we need to make a motion, right?
Yes. Get on it, Robert.
So we have consensus on, on that. Is that only being applied to the, obviously we're talking wall signs?
Wall signs.
Okay, so that'll apply to all the sections where the wall sign is discussed. Okay. All right. So back to where we were, we were on page forty-six. And we can come back to the other ones if, if, you know, that's what I was planning to do for the ones that Paul had added for today. But, um, forty-six, page forty-seven. Page forty-eight. Forty-nine. Uh, fifty, we have a change. We made it a scale to building size was eliminated. And on page fifty-one. Total sign height, three foot. Yeah, that, that needs to be corrected. So I guess it is, the four is reckon, it's, it's just the way it looks. So three foot is, uh, added. And then we are in now page fifty-two. Limited duration signs. We had vinyl and plastic, I guess those are common. Sandwich boards, no plastic.
Oh, can I ask you a quick question? I might have missed this in your comment, but on page fifty really quickly. On page fifty, with the roof signs, we, um, we took out the building height three stories and we just left it at, at forty feet minimum, right? When we were discussing earlier to bring them into.
You want to have the same thing here, forty feet?
Yeah, I think so, that we were trying to make them cohesive.
Yes.
Well, on page fifty, it would be, um, removing building height three stories or, and just having it being a forty foot minimum. Am I, am I recalling that part correctly?
I believe you are. Right on page fifty-three. Uh, during business hours, which we had discussed. Monument signs, we clarified just per entrance instead of major. And wayfaring signs, two per acre. Maximum internal to common development. On page fifty-six. Repair. We changed to a hundred percent. Then in, uh, any comments? Okay, variances on page fifty-seven. Clarified zoning board. Page fifty-eight. Capitalized zoning board, community development. Articles. The violation sections, they reference the specific code section for enforcement and penalties. Then we have the, uh, other handout, which we got to, which the wall signs. So the monument signs, uh, which is on the backside. What are y'all's thoughts with respect to that?
I think that made sense to me, especially for the administration purpose.
I agree with that as well.
And neon window sign clarifying just one. I, I agree with that too. Okay.
And that would be non-blanking.
Yep. Construction fence wrap.
That's actually what we've discussed before. It's just including it in this.
Yeah.
All right. Fence wraps aren't required though, are they?
No.
If they want to. Okay. All right. They can be a challenge sometimes, as Richard knows. All right. So we've gone through the packet and according to my notes, what we've identified as amendments to the redline version. And staff, I, I guess you took, um, notes on this. The first one I had was on page, uh, nine, section twenty-nine, paragraph one. And that is to reference the appropriate code section.
Correct.
And then the next one that I show is on page twelve. Where we changed thirty-five feet to forty feet.
Correct.
The next one I show is on page twenty-two. Where it was pointed out that we added or flash. Well, it is being here, so.
Yeah, yeah, that is. What I'm saying, there's no change to the text, just.
All right, just, you're just underlining it with a red line and making it red or flash. And on page fifty, the building height. Same thing, right? Forty foot is what we wanted it to be. So we'd strike building height three stories.
And did we decline to act on page forty-five about the internal box? Was it, were we all in agreement that internal box lighting was not something we wanted to include?
I, I think so. I mean, I didn't hear anybody say otherwise.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I just had a note there.
We certainly had a lot of conversation on the size.
Yeah, yeah.
Which we'll get to when we get to that document.
Roger that.
So that's what I have for changes on the big packet. And then the additions ever given us today, um, single tenant, this is for the sign face area. Thirty thousand square foot can go up to a hundred and square feet, a hundred and eighty square feet. Individual tenant. Right. Okay. Individual tenant, thirty thousand square feet or bigger can go up to a hundred and eighty square feet. All right, and no other changes to that. So we've identified the parts that we've changed to the redline and the parts that we have changed to the staff recommendation that was given us tonight on the May eleventh, uh, memorandum. So that's been our conversation and if there's more conversation, then certainly we're hoping for that. But if not, then it'd be time for a motion. If somebody would like to craft one. Well, I mean, correct, let, let me try to lay out the groundwork, so making sure the staff is satisfied in what we are proposing. And that would be that we would move to adopt the redline version with the specific areas that we identified changes to, plus adopt the memorandum of May eleventh. adopt the memorandum of May 11, with changes made for the individual tenant, 30,000 square feet and 180 square feet. Would that be satisfactory to you, Richard, or would you want it differently? You want two motions?
Yeah, if you, it doesn't matter how you vote on them, but as far as moving to council, it'll all be combined into one document.
Yeah, this one has to go into that. I mean, it's basically what it is, is these amendments are like the amendments that we just made. The redline version. Which the city council members would be able to address in, in that redline version. For what they, they haven't seen it before, have they?
No, not yet.
Okay, so they'll get one that will be redlined for them or will it just be?
Well, they'll get the entire old ordinance redlined and this will be replacing it, so.
All right. So.
And so we've deferred this once, correct? And so tonight we.
I, I think so. That's what I gathered.
Yes, that's right.
Idea is that what the motion would be is just to ensure that this document, which is the May 11 memorandum, is incorporated as changes to the redline version, along with the changes that we added to the redline version.
Part of that motion would be to adopt the staff, staff proposed amendment. I'm just thinking procedurally here.
Well, I mean, if, what I would suggest, and I'm the chair here, but is, 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 you know, the motion would be to adopt the redline version with the changes that we identified. And incorporate by adoption into the redline version, the May 11 staff proposed amendments as modified.
One motion.
You can do that. Okay, so whomever wants to try to do that.
I nominate Rob.
All right, I move that we accept the redline sign ordinance with the following changes. On page nine in section 20-9, part one, that we have a cross-reference for nuisance to the appropriate part of the city code. That in section 20-15 on page 12, this is section 20-14, item number 20, that we changed the building height from 35 to 40 so that it reads a rough sign on a single story building or any building under 40 feet in total height. On page 50, section 20-26, where we discuss.
Wait, 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 you forgot yours on 22.
Well, the other, the text is okay in that one. That was just a note to redline. That's not a.
Okay, I got it.
So page 50, section 20-6, where we discuss building height, we strike the text, building height three stories so that the building height standard is just 40 feet. And that we include all of the proposed staff amendments with the following change to the wall sign amendment. For sign face area, we include the line, individual tennis tenant footprints of 30,000 feet or greater. They have a sign up to 180 square feet.
That was 30,000 square feet?
Yeah, a footprint, an individual tenant footprint of 30,000 square feet or greater. Okay, they have a sign up to 180 square feet.
All right.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand. Hold them up so the counter can count. And did you raise your hand? I can't tell, Erica. I did, okay, great. All right. Thank you. The motion passes. Good job, guys. Taking a fair amount of work and I appreciate the work of the staff and our consultant from the last meeting that we had. So moving on to our agenda, do we have any new business? Do we have any other business? All right, we're at the public comment section. So is our administrator, see anybody wanting to make public comment? I don't see anybody in the audience, so.
Please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any commission comment? I'll start with Robert on my left.
Thank you, no.
I had one. I noticed on the steering committee, there was no one representing the, the office user crowd from a ownership or tenant perspective. And given that they pay a lot of our bills and are predominant in our community, I thought it might be good to check with them if we have it done so. I'm guessing we have.
Yeah, we had two commercial, mostly retail, but two landlord-ish kind of people.
And signs are more important to the retail crowd, right? But I just thought it might be prudent to run this past some of that. Those representatives.
Like a Perimeters Tennis Association, PTA. Jared?
I don't really have any comment. I just want to say sorry for missing last month. I wish you could have been here. Looks like you all did a really good job. I pretty much improved with everything you all did. It looks like it was a lot of work and I'm sure you guys had a late night. Sorry, couldn't be here for that. My only, you know, my only comment, and I don't want to go back and change or anything like that. I like what Erica did with the larger buildings. My only thing on that is I just want to make sure that that the signs are proportional to the buildings. You know, because the thing, I can't remember if it was Paul or if it was Richard that had said that, that the building on the target right now is probably, you know, 250 square feet or something like that. So just want to, you know, if we have a larger building in 40,000 or 50,000, just want to make sure that the sign is you know, proportionate to the building, right? So if we, if we cap them at 180, I just want to make sure that that's, you know, going to look correct. You know, I mean, so maybe, you know, think about how to do it proportionally versus just, you know, cabinet, cabinet at a certain size. And then I just wanted to, my last comment is just to make sure, so that Carrie Brown definitely has her answer correct. So we don't need to vote or say anything on her illuminated box sign. I mean, she's, so it's already not approved, correct? We don't need to do anything there. From Carrie, she had the question about the illuminated box sign.
It wasn't, it's not, it's not allowed anywhere in the sign code that we passed. So it was never, it was never an issue. She was asking us to consider adding it. But it's not something that we added, so therefore no motion was needed or no action was needed.
Perfect, okay, perfect. Good. Just want to make sure that she, you know, has closure on that, so. Again, that's it. Y'all did a great job, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the point is we made the signage potential bigger, so hopefully that helps to one degree or another. I just want to say thank to all of you and the staff for this. This is always one of the more difficult things to address because people do care about signs. And you know that when you go to different places where they look really neat and places not so neat. So, but it's important, as was pointed out, that our businesses do have the opportunity to attract customers because if they're not successful, then as homeowners, we will not be successful. So keeping that in mind, always thank you to the businesses of Dunwoody. So with that, I just have one question of staff. Do we have a meeting next month?
Possibly. Tomorrow, because tomorrow's our deadline to advertise it.
Okay, all right, well, we look forward to hearing that answer come to us. So any more business? All right, with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a great night.